Well, we do have a quorum, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting order to order. Sorry, let the record reflect a starting time of, I believe it is 5:31. And Sheri, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Spatafor?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein?
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Dunbar?
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
Councilmember Jackson?
President participating remotely from Lansing.
Councilmember Betts?
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza?
President participating remotely from the south side of Lansing, Michigan.
You have a quorum of the committee. I will watch for councilmembers Spitzley to come in.
All right, I appreciate it. You do have in your packet six pages, ladies and gentlemen, of meeting minutes from April 12th. President Spatafor, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from April 12th.
Fantastic. There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing, oh, sorry, Brandon, go ahead.
No, you're good. I missed the raise hand. Thank you. I just, I was going through the minutes today and there's a little bit of confusion from my part in reading a piece of the minutes that I wanted to clarify. I sent you all an email about two minutes ago or so.
Can you tell us what page and what section we're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me pull up the email here. All right, so we're looking at page five. It's the Resolution Public Act 99 Financing Johnson Controls. If you look, there's a statement in there near the bottom of the second paragraph, I believe, that says the financing was summarized by Act 99 Installment Purchase Agreement IPA, assuming that a 15-year total cost of $12 million IPA estimated at $15.6 million. I wanted to change that to reflect what was written in the report, one of the reports regarding this. Would you like me to read what I have written or can?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, okay, so it says, what I've changed it to is the financing was summarized by the Act of 99 Installment Purchase Agreement IPA. It stated that assuming a 15-year term, the total cost of the $12 million IPA is estimated at approximately $15.6 million. That reflects again what's written in the materials and makes a little bit more sense, at least from my perspective.
Sure. Sheri, can you make sure you have that? Fantastic.
Make her the motion. I have no objection to that change.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Sheri, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
And I still do not see councilmember Spitzley, so motion carries seven zero on approving the amended minutes from April 12th.
Fantastic. President Spatafor, am I correct in thinking you may have your computer up and running?
Not quite yet. I got three minutes left. I just gotta stand for this so Kathy wouldn't be thrown off.
Got it. Not a problem. We pull this back up. All right. All right. Thank you so much. So that brings us to, where am I at? A public comment on agenda items. There are a number of agenda items, items B through G tonight for discussion, action, and then we also have a presentation. Ms. Boat, very quickly, can you tell folks, we do have 19 participants, one individual already has their hand up, how they can virtually raise their hand?
Yes, if you're calling in on your phone, it would be star nine. If you're on a Mac computer, it's option Y. It's a window computer, it's alt Y. And if you're following along on the Zoom, you should be able to see a raise hand button down at the bottom of the middle of the screen.
Thank you so much. And with that said, first up, we have Loretta Stanaway.
And here comes councilmember Spitzley now, too.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'd like to get councilmember Spitzley on record first from where she's.
Yep, we can do that. Welcome, Councilwoman Spitzley. For the record.
I'm participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan. I'm having trouble with my camera. I'm sorry.
Hey, no problem. Thank you so much. All right, so that brings us back to public participation. We do have Loretta Stanaway. Loretta, you have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Hello, I have just two comments tonight, and one is for the city clerk's office in particular to say that I am very, very pleased with the changes in the website and the accessibility of the documents for the city council and the committee of the whole meetings. Huge improvement, good work. And the other is to say also that I was impressed by the Johnson Controls summary of the request for their financing. I thought that they had a very practical and level-headed assessments of the city's structural needs, and it was refreshing to see a really common sense approach in a document like that. Thank you.
Adam, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Anybody else that would like to make public, we have President Spatafor. Okay, you don't. Okay, anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to discussion, action, item B. This is a resolution of appointment for Daniel, I'm sorry, Danielle Letts as an at-large member for the Board of Commissioners of Lepfa, sorry. And this would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. I do believe that we have Danielle here. Yep, she's been brought over as a panelist. Danielle, how are you doing today?
I'm well. How are you?
We're doing really well. We appreciate you being here with us. In this kind of wonky kind of world, right? In any event, typically what we do is we give applicants an opportunity to just address the council, give us a little bit of background information on yourself, maybe your history with the city of Lansing, maybe anything that uniquely qualifies you for this particular position, why you want to serve in this position. Then what we'll do is we'll open it up for questions from the floor. Okay? All right, Danielle, you have the floor.
So again, I'm Danielle. I work for Edge Partnerships. They're a local marketing and public relations firm in downtown Lansing, and I graduated from Michigan State and I was born and raised in Lansing. What makes me uniquely qualified is Edge, not only do I do marketing and public relations, but I also do all of their events. So I brought a lot of events to Lansing, managing them, especially at the Lansing Center. And then I feel like my life is kind of going full circle here because I was an intern at Lepfa as well for the marketing department. So I'm very, you know, well-versed in what Lepfa does, along with Grossback and Jackson Stadium, Jackson National Stadium and all that. So I think, you know, I'm I'm very excited for the potential to be a board member there, and I really look forward to it.
We are excited to have you. We got fantastic energy. Do we have any questions from the floor? Councilwoman Wood, go ahead.
Thank you and welcome. My question would be, since you are currently doing marketing with the Lansing Center and the other entities, is that something you anticipate that you will be continuing since as a board member, you, there could be a conflict with that?
So I don't currently do marketing for the Lansing Center or any of the entities. My clients include, so I did events, like I brought event, my clients' events to the Lansing Center. So the Pure Michigan Governors Conference on Tourism, about a thousand, a thousand-person conference, they came there because that's what we recommended, but we don't currently do marketing for them.
Okay, but you, is it my understanding you will continue to recommend the center or the stadium or Grossback even as a board member?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see it as a, I don't see it as a a conflict just because that's what my, my profession is to recommend the best area for events. And if one of their facilities is one of the, is the best area for my clients, then I'm gonna recommend the best.
Okay. And I guess I would ask the city attorney, does he see this as, as any potential conflict?
Not offhand, but I would recommend that the requests be sent to the ethics board to bring it to a conclusion.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have councilmember Garza, then councilwoman Dunbar, followed by councilwoman Spitzley.
Good evening, Danielle. Thanks for joining us tonight. Good to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Well, I am supportive of your appointment, but I would like you to talk a little bit about what your role is with the Crystal Ray and what diversity you could bring to, to the Lepfa Board.
So I was, I don't know if I was one of the youngest board presidents, but I was one of the youngest Hispanic board presidents at Lepfa, which is something I'm sure, or at Crystal Ray, which is something I'm extremely proud of. I was brought in there, gosh, six years ago, and I became the board president about a year and a half after I was brought in there. And it's a passion of mine. If, if you guys don't know, they feed and provide medical support and counseling and everything for City of Lansing members. So that primarily what I do is I oversee the executive director and I oversee the center to make sure that they are within budget and doing everything right for the citizens of Lansing.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate all you do. I know Crystal Ray helped me out as a child when my parents got divorced when I was five years old. They provided some, some needed services for our family at the time. So thank you for all you do, and I'm very supportive of your appointment tonight.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dunbar?
Thank you. I was just gonna chime in. Like, I think that the, the relevant conflict of interest might be with her employer as opposed to with us. I would assume that it would be beneficial for any board member on Lepfa to be referring business to us, especially given that you support the Lansing Center. So I think that the issue there would be whether or not the employer actually felt that that was an, that was a problem making the referral, but I don't think it is on our end. But thank you for, for commenting on that.
Thank you.
All right, President Spatafor, as fun as it has been, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the keys back over to you.
All right, well, Danielle, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for answering our questions. I think with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution appointing Danielle Letts as an at-large member to the Lepfa Board for the term to expire June 30th, 2023.
A move.
Vice President Hussein, is there further discussion? Seeing none, Sheri, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, and it is on the council agenda for action tonight also.
Yes, and Danielle, Ms. Letts, excuse me, Mrs. Letts, you will not have to be at the council this evening. It's just a rehashing of all this, and we'll, we'll just vote, we'll vote on it. So you're welcome to be if you'd like to be, but in, in the real world, we'd have a swearing-in ceremony, but we won't do that. So after this evening, should your, I know you've got, I know you watch the meetings sometimes at home, so if you wanna watch along, if it's approved, please arrange a time with the clerk to be sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next item, the Public Act 99 Financing things, I would, since it was mentioned, I wanna mention the Agenda Center is a bit of a disconnected mess at the moment, and it's no one's fault. It's just the nature of new, new things. So Sheri has been working diligently with the IT department and our clerk's office to implement, when I think we talked about this maybe a year ago, a new component of the website that'll allow for paperless meetings, but will still allow for you to print the PDF and to have a packet should you need one. And that's, that's coming along, and she's trained, and then now she has to train me on the backend as well, and then we'll train everybody else. But for now, there was a disconnect on our website to find the agendas. I went there last night to pull up the latest copies and couldn't find it, and I heard from a few folks as well that they were having issues. But once they found it, they found what I found, and that was a very user-friendly tool. So for those who are following at home or listening at home, it's under government and then agendas and minutes, and I do believe on the council page, the links have been fixed as well. But I do wanna publicly thank Sheri and IT for all their work in getting that done on our end. It's gonna replace the some of the manual PDF construction that she does for committee meetings and the committee of the whole, and then it's gonna help automate the process for the clerk's office as well, so that new documents don't have to be sent out every time there's a change, and a lot of labor that's gonna be reduced. So pretty happy about that. We just gotta get through the transition. We were aiming for January 1st. We, we, we missed that by a few days, so we wanna get it right. So just wanted to bring that, bring that to your attention. Appreciate all the patience on that as we work to do it, but as you see, your PDFs are still coming through, so it shouldn't change if you're using those much. So next up, we're gonna talk about the PA 99 financing items. They're in reversed order on the agenda. I think that Mr. Fowler, or Mr. Fowler, Mr. Whitigan is gonna speak, Mr. Kiefer in reverse order. The Jackson Field improvements are gonna flow first, followed by Johnson Controls, but Mr. Kiefer, the floor is yours. As I, Mr. Whitigan, I see you're unmuted as well, so.
Yes, I apologize. My camera is also having problems, but I am here.
I think IT wants us to take the night off, guys.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time tonight, and as requested at the April 12th Committee of the Whole Meeting, I prepared and submitted for your review two separate memos discussing both proposed install and purchase agreement projects, and those, those memos are also included in the public packet. As you can see from the format that was used for each memo, we kept it the same, and the memos cover background and project overview, propose, the proposed resolution, IPA capacity, and then cap it off with a legal summary. So after you've had the chance to review those memos for tonight, I think we could start with, do you have any questions for me to kind of kick it off?
While I'm waiting for folks to raise their hands, I'll say I don't have questions after reading the memos. I think this is a much more concise and explain, explains quite a bit better than last week, and I really appreciate you all taking the time to do this to get it out there for us. I think someone in public comment mentioned it's, it's easy to read and it's very clear what I'm voting on tonight, so I appreciate that, and I don't see.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I appreciate that comment, Council President Spatafor, and, and for everyone, for council here, it's, it's my plan to just kind of get in the habit of doing this going forward if we're discussing something outside the box of budget or, say, audit. So if we can make this a habit from now on, or I can make it a habit from now on.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's a great, a great edit going forward. So, and I think councilmember Betts made it very clear, it's about $12 million improvements and over the 20-year life of the proposal, about, about $15 million in costs, and the improvements are pretty well laid out. So I do not see questions from the council is we, we got a presentation last week, is it due, and they're here, is, I don't wanna waste anyone's time certainly, but also, I'm comfortable moving forward if the rest of the council is, so take a motion. Oh, Councilwoman Jackson, I see you, sorry.
Thank you. Just wondering, was our sustainability manager part of the discussions and improvements, Lori Welch?
Andy?
I can, I can answer that, and I, my camera actually works, so I guess I'll turn it on for better or worse. She was part of that. She was not part of the initial study because at that point in time, she had not been, you know, appointed as the sustainability manager, sustainability manager, but yes, she was in in discussions as far as what the final recommendation was to move forward.
Just to follow up, and sorry, I was just, like, what was her role in the discussions? Like, did she, was she able to provide any, you know, feedback and, and understanding all, are we good? Like, does she need any? I guess, is our sustainability manager helping with this project, or was she like a part of it, just sitting there?
She, she wasn't just sitting there. She was a part of it, but I think her focus was more on what the energy and, you know, CO2 savings, so the offsets of the project versus more the construction aspects. That's what property management was part of with the Johnson Controls folks. So she was not part of actually picking exactly which improvements we would be making. She was more for the overview of what this would mean for sustainability for the city moving forward with these improvements, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. And I didn't mean to sound wrong. I don't have any information one way or the other. That's kind of why I was asking. I probably could have said my question better, but you answered it. Thank you.
No, no, it was fine. And I will point out that we're trying to have the information for these improvements, kind of a dashboard that will be easier for people to understand, and once we make the improvements, so people can actually see when we start to save energy on these and what those savings relate to as far as, you know, say, number of trees planted or cars off the, the road or something like that. So there is kind of a visual representation of the benefits as opposed to just the financial savings.
I'll set councilmember Jackson. Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Can you remind me again or go over again how the various departments were involved in selecting the, the scope of work and the projects that are, that are in this recommendation?
Yeah, so we had numerous kind of education informational sessions with the departments. They were on specific things, so we had one on controls, one on lighting, one on HVAC, and they came and basically provided information and got information from that. And then as we selected, when there were questions on which improvements were more important, then we met with the departments before we selected the improvements. For example, there were improvements recommended for the Alpha Training Center, the tower there. But long-term, that tower might, you know, be in another location. We don't know what the the future is for that, so those we deferred. And we, one of the fire departments input on that before making that recommendation. Same thing, I don't think it was so much on the police side because that was, was clear, and a lot of the fire stations, we knew they were going to stay in place, but there was a discussion, for example, on Fire Station 9, whether that one, we should, again, move that fire station to be a complete rebuild or an upgrade, so we there were some improvements, we're still recommended for Fire Station 9, but some of those were deferred until there's kind of a long-term vision for that fire station, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. I was just wanting to make sure that the departments, you know, were involved in the recommend, the list of recommendations, and so you've answered that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood?
I guess I'm a little confused. I thought we were talking about Jackson Stadium and, and not the overall Johnson Controls. So could someone clarify which we are talking about?
So yes, I can, that's probably partly the way I set this up. That's my bad, my, my, my fault, excuse me. We're talking about the overall package. There was a, a conversation I had earlier that if there was going to be, if there were questions in a presentation, they were gonna probably start with this stadium improvements and move into the overall improvements, but there hadn't been questions from the group after the memos had been released in last week's presentation, so I didn't, we didn't dive deeper into it. That's my, that's where the confusion comes from. I think it's my fault.
So we're discussing both of them at the same time? Is that my understanding? All right. Then, under the Johnson Control question, if I'm not mistaken, I, I believe Johnson Control was part of some savings that was supposed to happen at the Lansing Center, and, and we took some bonds out for that, and those dollars that were supposed to have been recouped from those savings were supposed to help pay for that. Can anybody answer whether that happened or not based on the information? And again, what I'm trying to figure out is whether the estimates that Johnson Control made with the Lansing Center, if that came to fruition, then it would make sense that the estimates that they're saying that are coming forward with this will come to fruition.
Yeah, you wanna know for buying magic beans, right?
Yes.
All right. Is anybody on the call able to answer that question as it relates to the Lansing Center?
I cannot definitively answer that, but I believe that was a, a similar process. However, from my information, that was Honeywell, so it was another major contractor that did that back, and I think it's, you know, five, 10, 15 years ago in the Lansing Center.
And you're right, it was Honeywell, it wasn't Johnson.
But it is the same, same approach. All I can say for this approach is that for the improvements that we have here, Johnson Controls, actually, it's written into the contract, they are, they guarantee the savings. So if somehow they do not achieve the savings that are estimated, as long as we don't make significant changes, like I can see, like, you know, a building's empty now and we, we fill it up, but they would write the city a check for what the difference is.
Okay. All right, thank you. That answers my question on that.
Thank, thank Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Dunbar, you have a question?
I do. I'm at the bottom of page 26 of 74, and it's the impact of the IPA financing capacity. I know that when we talked about the 2015 IPA with relation to refinancing that which was held by TMO, they were picking up the cost of the termination and issuance of a new IPA. Is this?
Kathy, before, before you keep asking, what document are you looking at? I'm sorry, there's not in my packet. Do I have anything that is that long?
I do.
Maybe of the whole packet.
Oh, the whole packet. Okay, what's the title of the document? I'm sorry.
It says financed, it's the memo.
Oh, the one from J C. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's actually, this is a memo from.
Yeah, okay, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, there's no page number on mine. Go ahead. I apologize.
Mine says 26 of 74, so it's the bottom of the first page, and it talks about the impact on IPA financing capacity and that there is a, there's limited capacity for us to do an IPA moving forward because we're kind of at our, our, our limit. And then it also talks about that that capacity might be reduced by estimated termination fees associated with the refinancing of a 2015 IPA. And I know that we had talked about this with relation to TMO, that they were picking up the cost for their portion of the IPA for the reissuance and the early termination, but what, how is this different than that, or is that wrapped up in this larger amount that's in here now?
Yeah, so you are correct that TMO is paying the final termination fees and cost of issuance with the refinancing, but yes, it's all wrapped up. If, if, if it's beneficial to the city, what I mean by that is we're gonna issue RFPs to ensure transparency and get the lowest cost to the city, and so the question we're asking there is, are there any savings to the city? And if there's no savings to the city, then we would not refinance the 2015 IPA.
But didn't, didn't we? But didn't we already decide in relation to the lug nuts contract when we negotiated that, that there is a savings to? I mean, that was part of the deal that we would refinance that bond, that IPA to give them a longer period of time to pay it, to lower their annual costs so that they could eat up have some more savings, and then, but our, our agreement was that in order to do that, they had to eat the entire cost of the reissuance and the early termination. So now, if this looks like that's a maybe or not maybe, I mean, that was, that was determined at that time, if I'm speaking correct, if I'm remembering correctly, that that did save us, it saved them money and didn't cost us money. But if we were not to go through with this, then there is a cost to TMO that's not in their contract now, and there would be a change in our, our financial plan for payment because that would make our payments higher now than what we projected because we were lowering our payments on that refi, too.
So maybe Baird can answer this.
Yes, I think, I think Brian's got it.
He might be able to answer better than I.
Council Dunbar, you are correct, i- in the sense that, yes, i- if there is a, any portion of, there is a fee or termination.
Council Dunbar, you are correct i- i- in the sense that, yes, i- i- if there is a, any portion of there is a fee or termination fee associated uh associated with TMO or refinancing the IPA, yes, they're responsible for paying that termination fee. However, the question was, if there was a, you know, an issuance of you doing the IPA to include it in the the refinancing of TMO, unfortunately, that portion of the of that termination fee counts against your limit or your bonding capacity. So it's kind of like if you had a hundred thousand dollar mortgage and you refinance it to include the cost of issuance or the termination fee of another three thousand, you're now up to one oh hundred and three thousand. The hundred and three thousand is now counting against your capacity, and that's just following state statute. But you're correct, is that TMO is going to be responsible for cost and termination fees.
Okay, so let me frame this again. That was helpful. So that extra three thousand dollars in the example that you just gave, regardless, that would always be paid by TMO.
Correct.
It wouldn't be paid by us, but because it's financed by us, that three thousand goes against our cap.
Correct.
reduces our, okay, so it's not coming out of our pocket, but it is limiting our balance.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. See no further questions. Um, I'll give you all just another chance to to ask some questions on either one, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve item C. Okay, seeing no hands, Mr. Vice President, item C, please.
Sure, I would move the resolution pertaining to Public Act ninety nine Financing for Johnson Controls Inc. uh in city buildings.
Very good. There has been a proper motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much. Next item D, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the resolution pertaining to Public Act ninety nine Financing for Jackson Field Stadium.
Motion's been made. Are any further questions, discussion? Seeing none, mentor, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley? Yes. Councilmember Wood?
No.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven one.
Councilmember Wood?
Is there anything in the agreements or with our agreement with um the um the Lansing Center that they will uh use union labor?
Mr. City Attorney, possibly you were the, I think you negotiated the last contract.
We have an agency agreement with Left, but it's been a few years. I'll have to look at it and get back with you.
All right, thank you.
I'll say Councilmember Wood for now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Next item is setting the public hearing on a Public Act four twenty five agreement with the Charter Township of Duitt. Um, presenting this evening on this issue is um Bob Trizeis and his team from Leap. So we will wait just a minute while they come in. And tonight, we're just moving forward a resolution to set the public hearing. We have a couple timelines that we could follow. We could set the public hearing for the third of May, which would allow for approval on the seventh of June, or set the public hearing for the tenth of May, which would allow for the approval on June twenty first. Um, we are recommending the third and the seventh, um, but it is council's prerogative as we move forward. So first, I will start with Mr. Trizeis, if you please. You told me ten minutes. I'm gonna hold you to it.
Okay, uh, I'll get it. Um, good evening. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, City Council. I'm so glad to be here with you tonight. We have something really exciting brewing for the city of Lansing and our region. As a global region, we have in front of us tonight an opportunity to fully present and prepare a site for an important potential project in hopes that that business may choose our community and wish to make an investment and create great new jobs and new tax revenue right here in the city. This four twenty five proposed agreement will help us continue our collective efforts to diversify and modernize our local economy. This four twenty five will help our regional economic development efforts to compete with sites and communities in other states that are currently under active consideration. The site is a single land parcel in Duitt Township, but adjacent to the city of Lansing. The property is owned by Emergent Biosolutions and is approximately thirty three acres in size. There are advantages to the city of Lansing and Duitt Township for working together and making the site ready for a prospective project. Of course, the site may work well as a standalone as well in just the township, but we're all better off working together on the site and maximizing its potential through a revenue sharing four twenty five agreement. Note, as the site currently sits in Duitt Township, the city of Lansing receives zero revenue from the site benefit or value. Leap has been leading this process over the last eight months, led by our Vice President of Attraction Keith Lambert and assisted by Tri-County Development and Placemaking Manager Dylan Rush. I want to thank the critical leadership of Lansing Mayor Andy Shore, Duitt Township Supervisor Rick Gialardi, as well as, think ahead of time, the leadership of the Duitt Township Board of Trustees and you, the Lansing City Council. Supervisor Gialardi and Mayor Shore have been absolutely terrific and are once again showing us that when we work together regionally, there is nothing we can't accomplish to improve the conditions of our individual communities, our entire region, and all the people throughout our region, if not the state. Simply put, growing, expanding, and attracting major business takes great effort, time, money, resources, patience, planning, which we really can only, which really can only be effectively done cooperatively on a regional basis when we're competing with other locations across the country and world, as we are in this case. The four twenty five agreement is an example of that dogged but regionally unified work. In addition, we need to thank the terrific partnerships and work of Leap's Vice President of Economic Development, your very own Carl Dorshimer. On behalf of the city and specifically in this role, City Attorney Jim Smirka, as always, and his entire team have been outstanding. Duitt Township Manager Andrew Dre- uh Dremmskand, Duitt Township Community Development Director Brett Wittenberg have also been terrific. I also want to acknowledge the MEDC's important assistance with Leap and ensuring Michigan is a competitive location option. The revenue sharing four twenty five agreement in front of you this evening uh is the same word for word or should be agreement currently being considered and hopefully passed by the Duitt Township Board of Trustees. They've already passed seven to nothing this agreement moving on into their public hearing process. The same agreement is being considered by both parties simultaneously, as agreed to by both administrations. By adopting this four twenty five, the city and township both have nothing to lose, but everything to gain. Um, this investment project, if if this investment project were not to happen, then there are a series of mechanics in the four twenty five that allows it to be revoked. Well, the agreement highlights are as follows. The agreement follows the same basic terms as the four twenty five agreement pay uh agreed to by the city and township ten years ago relating to the property adjacent to the nearby airport, where a new Nia Wave manufacturing facility was built. This and another four twenty five agreement between the city and township lay the groundwork for the Port Lansing Next Michigan Development Authority. The new twelve, the new four twenty five agreement in front of you does not contain the next Michigan portion of those previous agreements. Otherwise, the township wants the same agreement as agreed to by both municipalities from before, logically. Um, it is a very fair and very evenly split split revenue sharing agreement on township property is very advantageous for the city. And it's a extremely great deal from a regional perspective. The four twenty five covers only the property for the development, no more. It is immediately, as I mentioned before, adjacent to the city. Individual income taxes split fifty fifty, city property taxes splits fifty fifty. The city shall supply to the site zoning, police, fire, and EMI EMS, water and electric, border water and light, and sanitary sewer. Please note, it is anticipated that the utilities will be paid for upfront by a potential prospect and reimbursed via a brownfield TIF supplied by the city's brownfield program in you eventually. Additionally, additionally, emergent city services are already supplied only a few feet away from the site to the south. It's important to note that manufacturing facilities, um, which is very likely to be what goes on this site, typically use very little police, fire, or EMS and will be supplying its own vigorous security and emergency systems. The township shall supply building code enforcement and building permit inspection services. Nine eleven, nine one one is Clinton County, as is the Drain Commission. Border Water and Light will supply the electricity. The sewer will come from the city, as I mentioned, and this will be a very major enhancement to our sewer system that um is not near its capacity. As with most significant projects, if one is generated on this four twenty five site, the city is likely to be asked for not only the brownfield TIF, but also a one ninety eight fifty percent tax abatement. The MEDC may also be offering a significant incentive package if appropriate. It is likely the brownfield will be up to to up to thirty years. We don't know yet. But the brownfield will also immediately release ten percent of revenue sharing purposes into the city's general fund and also another ten percent to the revolving loan fund and admin, which is typical for a brownfield. So if there were to be a project, the city will enjoy from day one fifty percent of all new employee income tax revenue, which will be substantial, and fifty percent of any revenue generated from the property taxes um after those incentives are instituted. As a reminder, currently in the future without a four twenty five, the city will receive zero and our region might be not denied an important step forward in our overall economic development efforts. And the many great jobs we're going to create tonight together and over the next few months, I hope, for our citizens and families, many of whom undoubtedly will live in the city, buy a house, go to our schools, and spend money in our city businesses. The four twenty five lasts for the maximum fifty years, at which time it ends. And there's a series of um mechanics, maybe that Jim Smirka can mention a little bit more how that ends. There's basically a number of options. Um, one would also help that, hope that in the future of a four twenty five, that if we land this project, that of course, in the future, there will be additions and extensions and even other related buildings um to that company on the site. So it's, it's uh fair to say that hopefully there'll be even more being added into the future. Well, at this point, you may be asking, is there a company? Fair enough. Um, but we are hopeful, we are very hopeful about that, but we will have to wait and see. The one thing we do know, without this four twenty five agreement, there will not be a potential project for the city of Lansing. Remember, if there's a future project with an incentive package offer, that review by you as a city council body of the project will come separately from this four twenty five at that time in a totally open process. So you're not making any commitments tonight to incentives or anything like that. That's another step down the road. And of course, if there is a project, you will absolutely know, you know, who they are at that time. A four twenty five also can be passed and is typically passed with no project, just as a mere excellent preparation strategy for future economic development. Um, and as we mentioned before, by passing this four twenty five now, there is, in the most literal sense, nothing to lose for the city and township, but everything to gain. So in conclusion, I really strongly urge you to to consider this great opportunity that's in front of us tonight. Um, we are, I I think maybe somebody's at some point asked about tailing the the current revenue that's committed to the city from the first tw- four twenty five agreement. And Carl will be working with the uh, I guess it'd be the Treasurer's Office to to um get that information. Carl, Keith, Dylan, and myself, along with obviously Jim Smirka are here to answer any questions that you have. Um, finally, there is simultaneously some very minor amendment amendments being proposed to the Port Lansing Next Michigan Development Corporation four twenty five agreements from ten years ago that um apparently both the mayor and township supervisor Gialardi have preliminarily agreed to. And Jim can speak speak much better to what those minor changes are. So thank you again for once again moving the city forward like this. Economic development and regional cooperation are about the community and its people. And you are doing something really terrific tonight with regard to our community and improving the lives of our citizens. This is truly how a city grows. So with that, I can answer any further questions or our team can.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, we'll start with the city attorney, and then we have a couple, several hands for questions. So Jim, why don't you go ahead and say, I know you've had your hands up for a while.
Uh, just to uh alert you, you know, we had some issues with laser fees here in the last thirty, forty five days. So you might see something in the packet here that really is not up for approval neither. As Bob mentioned, there are two amendments to the current four twenty fives. The township requested that all four twenty fives terminate at the same time. So the two amendments extend the term so that the term of those amendments will uh terminate when the main four twenty five terminates. Going to, and those two do not require public hearings, nor are there referendums because they're not, they're they're not covered by the statute. And they're allowed in the agreement. The four twenty fives that you had before you requires a public hearing, requires it to be placed on file, and there are a couple sewer blanks that need to be filled in there. There's thirty four acres here, and that's in the exhibit to the four twenty five. Um, we will place it on file. Um, our thought is at least seven days notice before the public hearing. After the public hearing, there's a referendum period. Now, I'm only talking about the main agreement. I believe it's thirty days of referendum. So um, as Bob also indicated, there are, oh, I would say six or seven termination provisions in the four twenty five, obviously mutual agreement. Uh, failure to exercise or to execute a tri-party development agreement with a company uh could be a breach, material breach, expiration, that type of thing. So so again, we're dealing with the main one, which has a referendum period. You will have, and I see you have in your packet now, but you're not asked to act on it, are these two other uh extension agreements? That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
So just to be clear, tonight, we're voting on the resolution setting the public hearing on the new four twenty five agreement. Should the four twenty five agreement pass, we will entertain amendment, First Amendment to Area One, First Amendment to Area Two, to create parity among the expiration dates, but we're not dealing with.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, just want to make sure it's plain for everybody. Thank you. Um, in order of your hands being raised according to the Zoom overlords, it is Councilmember Garza first.
All right. Thank you, Chair Spatafor. Good evening, Mr. Trizeis and the rest of the Leap team. I just got a couple of questions and comments. I know you, I know you mentioned that, uh, you know, we'll be utilizing, uh, you know, our fire and police for that area as well as uh border water and light, the water and the sewage. Now, how does that work for permits? You know, you talked about a pro- a project happening possibly. Um, is there any um, any discussion of splitting the permit uh fees with the city of Lansing and the township?
Uh, I am not a- aware of a conversation about splitting the permit fees. I I understand the point. I I guess the best answer, uh, Councilman Garza, would be to, for us to look at that a little deeper. I I don't know the answer right off the top of my head, how provide, I get what you're saying, providing the infrastructure and yet another party is doing the actual inspections of it and how that, how that exactly works. So uh, maybe we could look into that a little deeper. But if someone has a better answer, I encourage it, but maybe we could look at that a little further.
Yeah, I I'd appreciate a follow up with that. And and I guess my my only other question would be is what are we doing to uh make sure we're utilizing local labor if there's a a project that comes to fruition?
Well, um, one is that would be a conversation for when the incentives are introduced for an actual project, which is not what we're doing tonight. So I would en- I would encourage that dialogue at that time. Um, and and also, you know, typically a bigger project is, and perhaps this will be one of those larger ones. You know, naturally, they they incline toward more uh probably labor work um and and a, and when it's a significant um project, but those would be probably questions better for the next stage if there is a next stage. and, and, when it's a significant project, but those would be probably questions better for the next stage, if there is a next stage.
All right, thank you.
Sounds like I don't have anybody that looks like they can answer your first question, Councilman Garza. So if we can, if you could, we can make sure someone gets it by the time we have the public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Jackson, followed by Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Chisice, for your work and your presentation. I'm inclined to support it regardless of the answer to my question, but I am curious because you mentioned that since it's in Clinton County, that's Clinton County nine one one, but you said Lansing Police Respond. Is that going to be a problem at all? And also, since we don't know what business is there, it'll be hard to speculate what type of possible crimes or responses there could be, but chances are, if it's one industry or one business, it's not necessarily open to the public, so it might be more like property crimes or something. But is there going to be a problem with Clinton County's dispatch to Lansing? And is there any conversation about having joint police responsibility?
Well, this really emanates out of our conversation from ten years ago with DeWitt Township and that four twenty-five agreement. It was a, that at that time, figuring out nine one one services and how that connects with the city's police department, actually, it was a very, it took months to figure that all out. And, but my understanding is now that is a very smooth process. We can certainly look into that, that, that deeper, but I do want to note, that's exactly the way it is for the last ten years at the airport in the four twenty-five. So I'm presuming that it's been going well, and there hasn't been any problems. Of course, we're, on your second part of your question, you know, I, I, we think that we have a chance to land a singular, you know, very significant manufacturing facility, probably. And therefore, I think we do probably have a pretty good idea that, in, in though, in though, if that's what we might be able to win here, those kinds of uses use very, very little police or fire services. And this particular facility would have extraordinary security on its own.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Wood, followed by Councilmember Betts.
Just to go off Councilmember Jackson's question real quickly. Part of justifying why we're receiving portions of property and income taxes, the fact that we are giving a service, not only the fact that we're initiating brownfields and that, but isn't that correct, Bob?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I, I, I understand the, the point and, but I, I, this, this, this property could also be served fully by the services of DeWitt Township. And so, you know, this is a, we, we've decided that this is an opportunity for us all to, to, you know, create greater revenue and, and, and a much better site, one that is more accommodating to major companies that may be looking at the site. So I think the city potentially could get a lot of money out of this when, of course, the other side of the coin is there could be a big project there and the city getting nothing out of it.
Okay. Do we have any idea from the time this is passed to when a decision might be made?
Yes, I think, I think that if we were to put this into place, that there could be a series of decisions made, hopefully in our favor, by perhaps late June, something along those timelines.
Okay. Has there been any thought? I know part of the money that we've gotten from the federal government deals with infrastructure and sewers and, and things like that. And we have two years to spend that if we're going to have to pay to put those in. Has there been any thought as to use some of those funds for that?
Well, I, I do just want to slightly clarify something. It would be the, a potential prospect or user of the property that would pay for that infrastructure. Not, not, not you, this, and not you, the city, but the, in the prospect. I know you know this, Councilman. But just to clarify that little bit of a point, we did, Carl being Carl, you know, he, he and we have a great relationship with the EDA, and, and that was explored a little bit. If the city wanted to pursue that, but frankly, if the company is paying for it, I'd, I'd suggest that, you know, maybe the city just wants to use this money elsewhere. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Wood, I got Councilmember Betts, but Jim, is there a point that needs to be made at this time, or can I call on you after?
I was going to answer your first question. Under the agreement, the code compliance code enforcement is within the township. And the chief has no problem with the policing, and I understand they have their own private police force anyway. So I just wanted to make sure. Now, master planning, the agreement, if you want to look at it, in section two point three, provides that the city and the township will get together to develop a comprehensive master plan for the area. But code enforcement is theirs.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Thank you, Bob, for being here and presenting this to us. I've got a couple of questions. I guess first off, is this the same emergent bio-solutions that ruined the fifteen million doses of the J and J vaccine? My second question is, is the plant that's going to be built in Lansing, potentially built in Michigan, or in Lansing, going to be a similar plant to that one in Baltimore? And then my third question is, what hazards and risks to the community, does the community face when it comes to the operations that will be done at this plant? Thank you.
Yep. Tonight, we're suggesting a preparation plan for economic development, which is the approval of a consideration and approval of a four twenty-five agreement. If there is a prospect at a later date, those would strike me, with all due respect, Councilperson Betts, that there will be a time and place to have all those questions answered for you by someone down the road.
Okay, I, I just, I, the memo that was sent to us titled renew PA four twenty-five in our local agreement between DeWitt Charter Township and the city of Lansing specifically says that we're trying to attract emergent bio-solutions. Is that not correct?
Emergent Bio Solutions is the owner of the property.
Oh, they are currently the owner. Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, looks like those are the questions from council. The thing we do have to do is decide on the date in the resolution. So right now, it's open, but I'm, I'm suggesting a May third hearing date, which would allow for the earliest approval of June seventh, but it could be approved later if, if things come up different, but so we're suggesting, I guess I'll entertain a motion for a May third resolution for council, uh, Councilor Spitsy, before we move on.
I was gonna move, I was gonna move the resolution for May third, so.
All right, well, Adam, you don't have to unmute tonight. Very good.
Bob, good job. I think it's great. I'm excited.
Thank you. I do see, since that's a proper motion, now we are open to discussion, and I'll open that up to Mr. Smirka, because he has his hand up. Jim, you're muted, though.
Trying to keep the phone away from all of you. Can I request a later date so that we have the ability to put this on file for at least seven days? And also on May third, I think you're going to have the village resolution up, so that might cause some, a long meeting, but I, I, I just requesting another week or so on the public hearing side of it.
Okay, well, the, the letter I got from your office today at ten o'clock says that those two dates would be fine, so you would rather have it on the tenth.
Yeah, I don't remember signing a letter like that. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Spitsy or someone, would, would you please amend the resolution to be on the tenth?
I would amend my resolution to set the public hearing for May tenth. Are we going to mess up any deadlines or dates by pushing it back to May tenth, Bob?
No.
Okay.
I had that conversation too, to make sure that we were okay on both fronts this afternoon when I got the memo, so I just wanted, we are safe.
Failure is always better, you know, but it's okay.
All right, so looks like we're looking at a May tenth public hearing for this. Luckily for everybody, we have city council of four weeks in a row, so there's lots of options to pick from. So without any further discussion, if we could, please, call the roll on the adoption of the resolution for hearing on May tenth.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar. Yes. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsy.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion to set the hearing for May tenth is passed eight zero.
Very much. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
For your work. Next one, thank you. We'll see you in a few, a couple of weeks. The next one is a resolution put forward by the mayor's office extending the state of emergency through July twelfth, twenty twenty-one. You'll notice that's a long time, but just remember, we can pull it back if we need to, if, if things change. But this, this process of remembering to set it, forgetting to set it, doing it thirty days out was getting a little cumbersome, so we're going to kick it out to July twelfth unless anyone would like to change that. But I will ask for a resolution, a motion on the resolution to get discussion moving, Mr. Vice President.
Uh, yes, so moved.
All right. Motion's before us, Councilmember Spitsy, discussion.
Yes, I just have a question. I know we had Mr. Tate in, gosh, it seems like so long ago, this, you know, that we had him in to kind of give us an update and overview of, of, you know, the city and what they're doing for COVID. I'm just kind of curious, do we, you know, you know, what the plan is for reopening? Have we, have we talked about a gradual reopening, or are we still going by the State Health Department? Do we have some indication if there is a plan in place for reopening?
Sure. So Mr. Tate is not on this meeting. So if you would indulge me, I can reach out to the administration, see if Mr. Tate can join us at a future committee of the whole meeting to discuss that.
Well, yeah, I, I would mind. I mean, I think we're due for an update anyways, because I think it's been a while. So if we could have him come back and talk to us about COVID activities in, in our office, that would be good. Thank you.
Great, yes, absolutely. And, and I've been in touch too with the county health department as, as it concerns the city council office and our meetings and such. And things have not yet progressed to a place where they're ready for us to be in the same room together. So I will, I'll have Mr. Tate come in and see what he's able to present to us on that information.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that, Council President. It's just that I think for residents who are watching and for folks who are asking, because I know I get asked.
No, no, not a problem. We'll just, I just, I just can't give you the answer tonight.
Yep, thank you.
No worries. Next up, we are going to have our continued discussion on the budget. We have invited.
I think we need to take a vote.
Oh, yeah, I, I just assumed it was good. All right. So thank you, Madam President, if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes, Madam President.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you, President Boak. Next up, we do have a budget presentation. I'm going to give the floor to Jake in case he wants to say anything, but we have invited our treasurer, Ms. Kirkland, and our HS, HRCS director, Ms. Coleman, to present. So first, in that order, we'll go Jake, the treasurer, and then HRCS Treasury to discuss revenue projections, and HRCS to discuss the allocations that have been made under the HRCS Basic Human Services Grant Process. Jake, anything to add to that?
Mostly, I just want to say that I'm completely available for you at this time. We have responded to your questions from the previous meeting. We can either go over those in detail, or I can just ask, simply ask all of you if you have any continued questions towards any of our responses. If it's CDBG related, I will admit that I'm not the top subject matter expert, but when we go into a budget overview and fringe, that was more my lane, so.
Very good. Well, Jake, what I think we're going to do is we'll, we'll then, we'll first go with our treasurer and HRCS director, and then depending on time and urgency of the questions, we'll have, we'll, we'll go to your responses to the council member questions that you have misproven working on.
Thank you.
Very, no, thank you. Ms. Kirkland.
I'll mute myself first. Good evening, everyone. So I was asked to address a few questions that Councilwoman Woods had on the budget revenue, so we'll start off with the income tax revenue. And how do we arrived at the calculation? Is that okay?
That's perfect. Thank you.
So actually, what happened when I came on board, I picked up from where the prior treasurer was, where Judy was, and the projections that she had already started formulating in various assumptions and things that were going on last year. And looking at those numbers which are provided in your package, she gave three different scenarios to consider. So that was one part. Then we looked, then I looked at the rate of unemployment. So we went from April, the unemployment rate being very high, roughly twenty-four percent, to now down to roughly six percent. So we looked at the rate of unemployment. Then on top of those two things, also looking at what would the impacts going to be to the income tax from those who are, for non-residents working remotely? And taking that into consideration and talking to other taxing authorities, other city taxing authorities, everyone felt like that roughly it was going to be ten, fifteen, twenty percent loss because of the remote work. On top of that, so the remote work also brought higher refunds. So we're just now starting to see the result of with those refunds, someone who normally gets a six-dollar refund is now getting maybe a fifty-dollar refund. So our refunds are higher. Taking all of those different scenarios into consideration, we felt like the most conservative way of moving forward was taking a roughly twenty to twenty-five percent reduction in our income taxes. Now, again, we keep looking at those numbers, monitoring those numbers, and working closely with finance, what Jay can tell them where we are. So that's how we came up with the income tax numbers. Are there any questions so far?
Mrs. Kirkland, I'm not seeing any, so you can continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the next question that was posed was, are we seeing income tax, any delays due to the COVID nineteen? Yes, there are going to be some delays, but we're not seeing a big reduction because of that with our income tax, our businesses, our major employers, they're all payroll. I mean, we get withholdings on a regular basis. Again, we see some reduction, not major right now. So we're not seeing a big delay in revenue coming in with those numbers.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wood has her hand up, so we'll have that question, then we'll move on.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkland. Can you tell us if we're still running the tapes from the state? Are we still getting those? And what is the amount of revenue that you see that we might be capturing from that?
Oh, great question. Yes. So we got the tapes. We got them a little late with all of the changes in the treasurer's office. We got the tapes late last year, I want to say. And then, so we're doing three years at one time. We started the process, by the time we got our letters out and everything, we started the process in March. We, I can tell you from March first to now, we've already took in revenue of seventy-eight thousand. and revenue of seventy-eight thousand dollars. We're predicting that roughly anywhere from fifty-five thousand dollars a month, you know, as a result of the state tape work. So we will continue to do that. I I I joke with the guys in finance that I already paid for my two positions to get that to do that work. So yes, we're, we're definitely gonna see some revenues from that number, from that work.
I know there was some concern, um, that, um, in turning these over to the court system for non-payment, and especially with the situation that the court system is in now, can you tell me, um, uh, for non-payment, how you're handling, um, these?
Um, Councilwoman, I can tell you that the court system and doing what we found that works are garnishments and small claims. And so we have been working very closely with the courts. So our garnishments, we can do those also through the state. The state allows us to bring data over there once a year, so roughly November, we take boxes of data over there and do garnishments. That proven, has proven to be very, uh, beneficial to us. So between that and small claim, but we have been working with the court system. We try to do everything that we can to collect before getting to the court. But yes, that process does take some time and we continue to work with the courts there.
So we're no longer issuing warrants, is that correct?
No, we're not issuing warrants. We we stopped that process because that's not even good for the city.
I agree.
Reputation in the city, so we definitely, uh, we we're not issuing any warrants.
I agree. I agree. Thank you.
Yes.
And then, um, can you speak a little bit to the property tax? Um, and the tax tribunal, um, portion of this, how many cases that we might have before the tax tribunal at this time, um, and any indication? Because we know they're usually behind, so we usually have to pay back, um, a couple of years as as part of that.
Like, I cannot speak to the tax tribunal, uh, you know, and how many cases we have. I know I spoke with the assessor and she did say that she has quite a few cases that she feels like, uh, we're gonna end up having to pay so much money back, which is one of the reasons why, uh, she projected that we would have a five percent increase in in, uh, property taxes, but we took a more conservative approach and only went with a two percent increase. Knowing that we would have all these, uh, border reviews and tax tribunal issues that would have to be resolved, but I can't address how far, how many we have. I just know from my conversation with her that she said there's quite a few.
Um, Mr. President, if there's any way that we can get that information from the assessors, um, either having her in or those questions answered, I would a- appreciate that.
Mr. Brewer, uh, could you see about having them answered in writing and then if, uh, Councilor Wood needs more, we can ask for a presentation, but, uh, seemed pretty straightforward? That work, Councilmember Wood?
It does, thank you. And then, lastly, um, I know as we started the projections on this, we kept looking at, alright, December, we heard about the vaccines and, you know, uh, we we keep looking at when we might be getting back to some normality. I don't know if we'll ever be normal again, but, you know. And now, you know, even ourselves are looking about July, and I believe that was the governor's last, um, order for state employees, that they wouldn't be coming back until July. And I've heard a great deal of talk from larger corporations looking at doing business differently. So have you looked at what the long-term, um, analysis could possibly be on on this, on this topic as far as income tax?
Uh, Councilwoman, I have not looked at a long-term basis. I will, I, I, again, we keep looking at our numbers ever so closely. And then I also with lots of conversation that we are hoping that people will come back downtown or come back into the city and to work. Uh, we are starting to collect that data. And as that data is available, I'd definitely be happy to share with you all.
Are are we doing anything with the larger employers? Are are we doing any surveys with them? You know, accident fund, Blue Cross, when I, you know, the state of Michigan, um, LCC, when I'm thinking of the top employers, um, of course hospitals don't count because they're inundated and then, you know, uh, it it's not the same, but when we're talking about businesses and offices, have we had any, um, thought about doing a survey with them to see, um, what their thoughts are as they move forward?
Uh, I have, I am not aware of that, but that, I think that is definitely a great idea. I think the mayor and is working with a team of individuals who are looking at that because they understand of the economic impact. Most of the conversation I've heard is from downtown and, uh, in the company, the businesses downtown, but I'm not aware of anything else. And I did hear that at one point that LCC was talking about coming back in August, which would make a big difference also.
I I would really recommend if, um, whether it's the administration, whether it's your office, whether it's finance, you know, when we look at the top employers, would you have the data on on that and paying the income tax and reaching out to them and and getting some idea what their next steps are gonna be and whether they see any significant changes. You know, we've got, um, Jackson National Life, that's a four twenty-five agreement that we get money out of that, you know, um, which is another high employer. I, you know, I I would think that, um, we should have some of those discussions earlier than later.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. We'll do.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitsy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I would, I'm gonna echo what Councilmember Wood is saying, um, you know, as we look and we go across, um, the country, we're seeing that a lot of employers are saving a ton of money on office and they're actually finding that their employees are a lot more productive because you'll have them like sending emails at midnight and one o'clock in the morning when they should be sleeping and you know, but seriously, you know, my suggestion, um, is, if if you guys are doing that, is to, you know, uh, reach out to, uh, Department of Management and Budget on the state of Michigan side because, you know, hearing reports that they're not gonna be coming back. And and most, a lot of our buildings downtown, you know, house state of Michigan employees, and so it might, it might look different and and I think that we need to you, I, and I hate to pile more work on it, because I know you guys are doing great work, but as we're looking, you know, in the next few years, I I think we're gonna have a, you know, a a concern that we're not gonna have the office. The office space is gonna be a lot more downtown, so I think that's a valid concern. So if we can reach out to Department of Management of Budget, I think it would be a good thing to at least hear what the state of Michigan's projections are for their, um, office space usage in the next few years. Thank you.
I'd like to add that I think these are, um, very excellent suggestions and I'm looking forward to possibly following up on some of these. Uh, one thing to note, uh, that if we do ask uh, these questions at this stage, we'll find many employers who are in the same state that we are right now, where there's, uh, tremendous uncertainty across the cities, so this may be a part of an ongoing process where we, uh, monitor conditions over a period of time. But that's part of our standard budget process. We all are very familiar with amendments and supplementals, so, and we look forward to working with that.
Thank you, Jake. Councilmember Wood?
And and Jake, you know, and and I agree, we might get one answer today, but four months from now, we might get a different answer, and six months from now, we might get another answer. I think this is an ongoing process that has to be done on a revolving basis based on the, um, the situation and the climate that we see that's out there. You know, w- we're seeing some hesitancy right now in vaccinations. So whether that will have an i- an impact or not. Again, many of us thought that, you know, once, uh, the vaccination started, that, you know, by March, things would be back to some kind of normality. And again, now we're talking about July. You know, so, uh, I I know the ball keeps bouncing and changing. But somewhere along the line, somebody's gotta make a decision and, um, you have, as as Councilmember Spitzley said, you've got the state that has leases that are going to be coming up and they're gonna be making decisions on whether to move forward with those. Then you have private businesses out there doing some of the same. You know, one of the things I think of is the, uh, grand, uh, ramp, not the one the city owns, but the one that we sold. You know, there's, that was utilized almost ninety percent, um, by state workers from, um, the, um, building right next, you know, uh, next to it and and now that's not being utilized. I'm sure they're gonna come forward with tax tribunal and look at making some request for reduced, because of reduced revenue. So I just think this is a, a, a situation that continues in flux and we have to be, we have to not wait till the last minute to get information.
We appreciate that vigilance.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Um, Ms. Kirkland, please, uh, continue.
I I have nothing.
You're all set. Thank you very much. I didn't want to interrupt. Thank you very much. Any further questions for the treasurer before we move on to Director Coleman? Seeing then Director Coleman is, the floor is yours.
Good evening, all. If you don't mind, Mr. President, please bring in for me, um, Katrina Uresta and Tony Young.
Yes, certainly. City TV, uh, will take care of that in a moment.
Tony, yeah.
Or just pretend like they're sitting down in the chairs and getting situated.
There they are. Tony Young led our team in the process for the general funds allocation and I wanted to give her an opportunity to, uh, begin the dialogue. Look, Tony?
Um, Ms. Young, you're you're muted, I'm sorry.
How many times a day do we do that?
It's only been a year. We'll figure it out eventually.
Thank you, Director Coleman. Um, yes, as I'm sure you all know and you've experienced yourself, it's been a really challenging year um, for human services agencies. Um, they're no exception to this. But they have really, really supported the citizens in our community. And I just want to thank them publicly for, um, really being creative and modifying their services all that they can to keep providing services to people in our community. So just a big shout out to them. Um, and we're also very thankful for the city council for, um, setting aside some revenues to support racial equity. Um, and Dr. Coleman's gonna, or Director Coleman's gonna talk about that a little bit more. But I just wanted to tell you a couple of things that are involved in our process for, um, this app, these applications and these recommendations that you see before you today. Um, one of them is that, um, we kick off this process in early January um, with our community forum where we bring, um, about more than seventy agencies together, about a hundred people attend each year. This year was virtual, of course, um, but they still came and we talk a lot about, um, needs and gaps and trends in our community. And of course, this year, a lot of the talk was about COVID. Um, and so, and all the things that they are scrambling to do out there. So, but that informs the process that we, we take up with, uh, requesting applications. Um, and then our HRCS Advisory Council, um, reviews those applications. Then they go for, um, review by our director and also the mayor. So those are just a couple of things in our process. I just wanted you to know. Um, I think the ordinance is what really directs us in terms of our process and and it has gone through a lot of change in the last couple of years. So I'd like to defer back to you and your questions. And unless Director Coleman wants to chime in, but, um, we wanna answer your questions here today.
Hey, um, Director Coleman? I know, uh, you said, uh, Katrina Urista as well.
Yeah, I brought Katrina on in case there was questions for her particular agencies.
Okay, thank you.
We are prepared for questions.
Oh, you're prepared. Okay. Are there any questions for the director? I know, um, specifically, one of the questions we had is, was answered in writing about the new, um, allocation of resources for, uh, racial equity. And there, an RFI will go out, is that correct?
That is correct.
You'll treat that new dollars as sort of a new process, kind of ad hoc in the middle of this process, okay, cuz?
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson and Spitsy?
Thank you. Um, so, I think I read it somewhere, but the money allocated for racial equity, is that the three hundred thousand that's going to the task force? Or is that something else? And also, when you had the community forum and you identified needs and gaps and kind of requested proposals, was there any request that had to deal with violent crime reduction or gun violence or root causes of crime and any, you know, suggestions or recommendations that had to go through, uh, your department to correct it?
Um, why don't we answer your questions in the order that you asked them? I'll answer the first and, uh, Tony will address the second. The three hundred thousand, uh, that we are hoping for to support the, um, racial equity plan uh, was what was presented to you with more detail in writing. The hundred and thirty-five thousand would be for community initiatives, uh, with regard to racial justice and equity.
And I guess, before we get to that next one, with that hundred and thirty-five thousand, does that have any designation yet, or, um, how how does that get designated? You said you had the form already.
Not for that, not for that particular one. Um, the racial justice equity fund are funds that you approved last month. When you added an additional percentage to the one point two five. So that's where the hundred and thirty-five thousand came from. Uh, and it is intended to support race and social justice initiatives. But our hope would be to engage the community in doing so by, uh, submitting a RFI, a request for information, uh, that will then inform our RFP proposals for projects and initiatives.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. All set? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spitsy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Coleman, for being here. Um, so the the one thirty-five, you, I I'm trying to understand, you you're going to, so explain to me, you, the R, what's the purpose of the RFI again? You're getting information from the community groups or you're getting, okay, and then based on that, you'll have them respond to an RFP, that's correct?
That'll give us an opportunity to hear what the community feels are priority. Um, and they'll have some way of engaging and some participation in how the funds are being used.
How will you, um, how will you populate that community that will give that feedback?
Well, my intentions are to get it out to all of the agencies in the community, but also post it so that individuals that have organizations that are not on our list could as well respond.
Okay.
They would then submit it to us.
Thank you. How often do you update your list?
I hope annually. That is the intent, yes.
Um, and 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 then can you just go over really quick, you have a, now, the the outreach session that you're, that's going on this week, is that part and parcel of the hundred and thirty-five, or is that different?
That would be different. The, and I I hope I'm understanding your question correctly. We are doing a community forum on Thursday, uh, with regard to the Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Alliance. Uh, and with that, we're hoping to provide an update with regard to. And with that, we're hoping to provide an update with regard to the Racial Justice and Equity Plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar, then Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. I was just actually going to ask Director Coleman, how much the Racial Justice and Equity Group is going to influence any of the expenditure on, of that one thirty-five, or will that be completely directed by community input?
The Racial Justice and Equity Plan has a component within it that is made up of community. And that would be the various work groups. There may be some suggestions that are applicable in this particular case. If that be the case, we'll include those in the mix as well.
Okay.
Just to be clear to Councilmember Dunbar, I know you were there on this. So this is mostly just for clarification purposes, but the HRCS designated one point three five percent goes to the HRCS Advisory Board, not the Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Committee Commission.
Right, right. But what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is if they will have any say in, I know we're putting out an RFI to talk to the community about what types of work are needed in the community. But I was asking specifically, will that task force, that alliance, be making any recommendations as well? I personally, I mean, if they overlap, that's great, but I would put more weight in what the public says in that issue as opposed to the alliance as far as expending those dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunbar. I can't tell you anything about influence at this point. My intent is to gather information and to pool that information so that the advisory council can be a part of helping to allocate those funds based on what's been determined as priority from the community. And as I indicated earlier, there's an external scan that was done. And there's other information that will come out of that scan that may be suitable for those funds. You would not want to provide an opportunity for them to bid on the funds as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Wood and Spitzley.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I'm, in the one hundred and thirty-five thousand Racial Equity Fund, I am assuming rightly or wrongly that between now and July first, you'll be working at putting together the recommendations for this so that you can enter into contracts as of July first with this, since your other funds are already part of our budget process. And if approved, the end of May will take effect July first. Am I correct on that?
If I read your question correctly, that would be correct.
I know that we get a list during our budget process of those funds and where they're going. Is the anticipation that the department would make a presentation to council before July first, even though we would have voted on you having the hundred and thirty-five thousand as part of racial equity without knowing exactly where they're going, you know, by the end of May?
The anticipation was to use the same process that we used for the other one point two five. And that would be that it would go through the advisory committee and then will come from them as a recommendation to the mayor and from the mayor to you.
Okay. And, but that would probably happen after the budget this year, after the approval of the budget this year.
That is correct.
Okay. And then now that you know you have this extra money, this additional money, in the future, it would be part of the same process. Am I, am I correct with that so that we'd have all this information all at the same time with this one?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the three hundred thousand dollars that is part of the mayor's racial justice and equity strategies, are you going to speak at all to that this evening?
Sure. Myself and Linda Sanchez Gonzala will be speaking to it and are available with whatever questions that, to address any questions that you might have.
Well, we, we have it in front of us, but, you know, I'm not sure that the public has that information in front of them. And so I was wondering whether you, whether you could just briefly, and I realize, Mr. President, at seven o'clock, but if you could briefly go over what that is so that the public would understand what those, what that breakdown is.
Sure. Well, then at this time, if there are no further questions for the general allocations.
I do have one. I just want, I think I've got one hand up from Councilmember Spitzley and then I have a question or comment, Councilmember Spitzley.
And I just want to clarify what I thought I heard when you were speaking to Councilmember Dunbar. When we, when she asked about, you know, reviewing the RFPs, who's, who's going to be doing that? Is it your, your existing advisory council, not the alliance, right?
Right. We'll be using the advisory council for that.
The one that.
The, the HRCS advisory council that you appointed.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Sure. And I just wanted to thank you too for, I know the ordinance change that we pushed through with the additional dollars for organizations that address racism and promote racial equity was last minute change. So I really appreciate that you're not just trying to sort of make that fit into the application process. You already have it rather trying to involve as many community organizations and community members as you can. You know, I'm comfortable moving forward with the appropriation, saying that we're going to spend this money and then seeing your recommendations around before July to get, to get some funding out to the organizations that can do that work for the city. That's really important. And I just thank you for being flexible on that because it wasn't necessarily in law that you had to be. So I appreciate the, the indulgence.
Thank you.
I guess before we move on, oh, I do see one more hand, Councilmember Jackson. And then we will move on to the three hundred thousand dollar request for the MRJE strategies.
Thank you. And this is kind of a comment, and it deals with both of them. So the one hundred and thirty-five thousand is appreciated, but it really seems like a drop in the bucket when it comes to trying to do anything. I mean, there's a proposal to hire a, a social worker for the police. That's like a total of seven hundred and five thousand. I wonder if that's a typo, but it is something very high just for one additional play. The hundred and thirty-five dollars might be able to repair like a tenth of a mile of a road in Lansing. So I guess just looking at the big picture, one hundred and thirty-five, even though council was able to find it or suggest it, it's so short. And then I don't want to jump the gun too much on the three hundred thousand, but when I look at it, I see a lot of consultation and a lot of employee training. And I guess I'm, I'll just listen to the presentation before I go any further. But to me, that seems, I guess I wonder, is that gonna make a big difference for us when it's consultation stipends and training of employees? Because a lot of times when, as an employee, when you go through the training, it's kind of like a requirement that has to be done, that you have to check and sign your name for. And I don't know, I just don't know how serious it's taken or what one training does. But I'll, go ahead. I'm sorry. I don't mean to, to jump the gun on that.
And I just want to point a clarification on that hundred and thirty-five thousand too. That's the statutory requirement that has to be dedicated to racial equity and social justice in the one point two five percent. Council can find more money. It can use more of that one point three five percent allocation. It's just when we passed the ordinance in February or March, the change was increasing the amount of dollars dedicated to basic human services and requiring that increase to go specifically for those causes. There's room in the budget to look, you know, through the budgeting process to find more dollars. But this is a statutory obligation that requires the city to do at least this much going forward until the ordinance has changed. And I don't have the history on how many times it's been changed, but that, that's kind of like the clarifying point there, Councilmember Jackson. This wasn't just a random number. It was a percentage of the city's budget. So it's not always going to be a hundred and thirty-five thousand. If the city's budget grows, it will grow with it. And that number can change certainly through ordinance amendment or adding more resources through finding it in other places in the budget. But it is a bare, like, ground level, basic guarantee of appropriation of a certain percentage of the city's general fund, not just a hundred and thirty-five that we found. And then, okay, I thought you might want to respond, so I was pausing. Go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
It just seems like it should be more. And I, and I'm sorry, I didn't have the, the root of that number offhand. But, you know, when we talk about the bare minimum, this is something that requires more than that. So I'll be looking at that as we continue with our presentations.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing no more hands on this particular topic. We will move on now to the three hundred thousand dollar request. And I think Director Coleman, you said that Director Sanchez Gonzalez will be presenting on that. Linda, great to see you this evening.
And I can get us started here. As you know, for the last ten months, the executive team consisting of Mayor Shore and Teresa Bingham, Chief Green, Linda Sanchez Gonzalez and I have been working at developing a pathway for entry into racial equity for the city and city government. The funds being requested in the amount of three hundred thousand will help set the stage for our racial equity and justice plan by helping us to build the infrastructure that we think is needed for our work to continue to work towards equity. While not all inclusive, we have identified the items noted as our first year priorities. And we did provide that copy for you to review with hopes that, I'm not sure how much time you want us to take on this one, but we'll just kind of breeze right on through. The first item on that list of items that, that sums up the, that makes the total of three hundred thousand would be five, would be five thousand for onboarding. And Linda, you want to speak to that? You're on mute.
You're here?
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you. The city, we're looking at developing an onboarding video of new employees that are coming on to talk about the culture within the city. As we know, we want to engage all employees with different perspectives that are offered so that we can be successful in showing what the city is about. In order to do that, we thought that we would bring different departments and employees and showcase what the city really is. That's in development. We haven't formed what that might look like, but that's what we're thinking. We'd be working with Dominic, you know, TV to help us with the different departments, but really to showcase what we are about and culture throughout the city and making that change.
In addition to that five thousand dollars, and again, we are hoping to set the tone for the culture of the city beginning first day for new employees. But we also have to address the matter for existing employees. And while training by itself won't heal all the matters, it certainly will begin to make some impression and hopefully make a dent in it. And so with that, we're also talking fifty thousand for DEI training modules. That would be very similar to what we do with the security awareness training, if you're familiar, for the city of Lansing. So with that, employees would be required to watch installments related to DMI, DNI, I'm sorry, DEI. And there are a number of training topics that would be presented there. And then we're talking about fifty-four thousand to begin training ongoing about a hundred and twenty staff. First year would be cabinet members and supervisors, managers. Our priority would be those departments identified in the report as really having some challenges and needing additional support. The second year would be, and beyond, would be facilitated by employee trainers, which you'll learn more about that in a few minutes. And then twenty thousand for equity training to build a team of individuals to provide ongoing support to the city, advancing social and economic equity and their specific program policies and practices. So we're looking at a train the trainer model where we'd have champions across departments assist with training and help hold departments accountable with regard to equity action plans. In addition to that, we're talking stipends for the trainers up to the amount of fifteen thousand. We're hoping to have individuals from each department to help provide that support. We do have the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer, but she by no means would be able to be embedded in all of the departments. We would have to build a team of people and we would need to engage everybody that we could possibly engage from the inside to assist us with carrying out the plans that we hope to present to everybody in June. So the best way to do that in our minds would be to create a train the trainer and get other individuals from within the city to assist us in carrying out that plan from their department's end and also to help monitor the equity action plans by department. And then we talked about a ten thousand dollar consulting to assist us in working with the cabinet to set the tone at the top. We know that's where it's got to start. It started at the top. It'll funnel down to everybody else. And that is the, the whole concept of equity and inclusion and diversity. And so we intend to continue to work, but we would hope to have individuals that we could contract with to help provide that guidance for us, to help us with some of those challenges that I know that we're going to encounter and to assist us with other opportunities that we might have to help impact equity, inclusion and diversity in the city. And then we have seventy-six thousand that we've identified for an equity matrix. And the equity matrix basically is a map that will be, that actually pulls data from multiple sources, including census track data and opens other sources that are public facing. Most of that information is coming from census. It's coming from other departments that do that kind of stuff and other, other data that's available within the city. It's updated annually and it allows you to go into a particular area in the city and identify what some of the issues are there. It will show you race. It will show you income. It will show you any number of things. And the hopes is that that information will help departments and community make decisions about how funds will be handled, what programs are needed in those particular areas, where we need to step up, what it is that we're talking about doing. And so that would be the Equity Matrix Online Mapping System and would be a collaboration between IT, neighborhoods and planning that would help pull that one together. Then the last thing was an equity, equity action plan. Putting together a racial equity plan overall is one piece of it. But you got to target specifically the departments that are having some challenges. And there may be some that don't have challenges, neither here nor there. Each one needs an equity plan so that they could begin to build equity within their departments and can keep that at the forefront of all of their decision making, you know, their budgeting, their policies and so forth. And so we are hoping to have each department within the city that would have an equity action plan, but which they would then be held accountable for and carrying out. I think I covered everything, did I?
I think you did. You did. So are there questions on this? Certainly, we can, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just looking at that last allocation of the equity action plan by departments, seventy thousand dollars. I guess my question is, what is the seventy thousand dollars for? My understanding in the brief presentation is that the department heads, after they're trained, comes up with this plan. And, you know, they're already employed by the city. So I guess what's that seventy thousand for?
The department heads don't actually do the plan by themselves. We have consultants that will come in and help the departments pull their plans together. We're doing an internal assessment as it is, and we're hoping that that internal assessment will help feed that equity action plan. And so they'll further help them develop that plan overall for each department.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar.
I think I'm gonna sound like a Debbie Downer here, but that is a lot of money. I mean, we're talking about giving the community a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and we're talking about three hundred thousand here to, to study and teach people how not to be racist. And there's, there's no like component in here about holding people accountable for being racist. So my issue is, like, where does that come into play? Like, what's the strategy for actually dealing with people who are behaving outside of, of what we're trying to accomplish here? Like, this is so much money to train the trainer and teach people and I'm gonna bite my tongue. And I just, I don't, I mean, this is, this is an annual expense?
Well, that's what we've identified for this year in particular. Again, the intent was to establish the infrastructure from which we hope to build on. When you're putting together the racial justice and equity plan, you've got to have a way of continuing to maintain that plan. And the plan has to be filtered through the various departments, and there is accountability. And that's where the Equity Action Plan comes into place. You got to change the culture. You got to have a plan for each department, and you got to continue the training.
This is Linda. And when you're moving something like this forward, Councilmember Dunbar, you're talking about actually changing the culture. Help us with hiring, with recruiting, with retention, with promotions. But that change has to come from within, and if we're not training our employees in some way, it's, it's going to remain as is. So I think that this is an important first step. And I don't think that it, it's reflective of everything that has to be done, but it's not just teaching people how not to be racist. It's diversity, it's equity, it's inclusion, and all three of those things mean something to us.
And the equity, and if I could also add to that, the Equity Action Plan could very well include changes in policies by the department with regard to the way we handle or manage things, whether it's hiring, whether it's, it's reviews, whether it's whatever the case may be, that's all a part of that. And so the Equity Action Plan is going to address some of those issues that have been identified by department to hopefully take care of what you're speaking to, Councilwoman Dunbar.
So who is the outside expert in this matter? That would be kind of overseeing all of this? And I, I've already heard that, you know, that there was equity training in the police office department done by the chief. That doesn't work for me. So in, in, in those situations, who is the person who is identified to sort of guide this process from outside the city? To, because training the trainers is a great idea. Our current trainers right now might not be the best people to be doing that. But who from the outside will make sure that what they are doing fits the protocol of, of actual DEI?
This is Linda. Do you want to go, Kim, or do you want?
Yeah, please, go ahead here.
We've been working closely with the Michigan Public Health Institute. They are very, very good at what they do, very experienced. And I believe that we would continue using their knowledge as we move forward this year. Certainly, as trainings in different departments are identified, I think at that point, we would need to look at putting out RFPs and evaluating who can come in, because I, I agree, you can't have trainers who we have in the same culture that we have, I guess, doing it. We need an outside group. But that's, that's what I, that's where I believe we're going.
I'll say, Councilmember Dunbar?
Oh, yeah, for now, yeah.
Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Spitzley, and then if there aren't pressing questions, I would encourage us to move, move to adjournments.
Yeah, you know, and to be, to be honest with you, President Spatterfor, I, um, I think Kathy actually hit on a number of my, yeah, when I, the first blush, I'm just underwhelmed. I'm going to be real honest with you. I look at these items, I look at the allocation, and I can't point to something and say that's going to move the needle. We look at equity action plans. There's a, there's a whole lot of plans floating around the city, but obviously plans are only as good as their implementation. We, you know, you take a look at online mapping. We have maps that tell us just about everything we possibly need to know about the city, our demographics, infrastructure, et cetera. And I can't tell you that we, in a scientific way, apply any of that in our decision-making. At least a lot of times, it doesn't feel like we do. Fifty thousand dollars for training modules, I mean, I'd jump right out of, because I know how most of those are navigated, right? With that mute button on and everybody checks the tab every once in a while and clicks next. And then they get their four stars at the end of their, their module. I mean, I just, I don't know. I struggle a little bit with this, but I don't want to be redundant. And so, I don't know. Again, I just can't point to something here and say to myself, yes, this moves the needle. But I appreciate the time, President Spatterfor.
Councilmembers Spitzley?
Thank you, President Spatterfor. You know, I agree with Councilmember Jackson. I, it, to me, it seems more fair to have the dollars swing the other way. I'm absolutely concerned with the large dollar amount for IT and GIS. I am, you know, and, and I could go, I could go on and on. If we're voting on this tonight, are we voting on this tonight? Okay, I, I will not be supporting this. I'm just going to tell you from here on, I just find the list long on, you know, the modules. And when you mentioned the modules similar to the IT modules, I'm thinking, yeah, those work. You know, the, it, it's just not something, that three hundred thousand dollars, as Councilmember Dunbar says, I, I, I don't see how it, I, I don't see how it addresses. The, the things that you have listed in there are things that I don't see addressing the root problem. You know, the, the, the large amount of dollars for these modules and these that IT is, I, I find the whole thing troubling. I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to bring up one other thing about the modules. The, the ones that we use for IT, people flip through them fast. They're not engaged. There, it's a question and answer. It's, it's, and if you think you already know the answer and you guessed the question right, you move on. But it doesn't give anybody time to delve into the depths of the roots of racism. Like, i- if, you might be able to do implicit bias questions and see who comes up with what. But the, the most effective way to reach people is face-to-face and in groups. And I don't, I don't see that in this scenario. And so were you anticipating that when you train the trainer, that they would actually have small groups that they do? Okay, and what? At what point, let me ask this to, to, to Director Coleman and maybe President Spatterfor, what is the timeline for us to have to approve this? Like?
Folks, I think there may be some confusion. This is part of the mayor's budget recommendation, and you can do with this whatever you want.
Okay.
This is May seventeenth is the approval date. This is all part of the large budget presentation. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. This is just a, a request in the executive budget for three hundred thousand dollars for this work. In your committee work and through your budget priorities, you can certainly take a look at reallocating this, doing this or eliminating it. But it's not, this is not a separate item. This is, well, with the exception of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which is statutory obligated. But the other piece is, it was all questions that were asked about those line items in the mayor's budget. So that's what we're looking at. This is not a supplemental request or anything like that. This is just further information on something that was asked for clarification two weeks ago, possibly three.
And in, will there, will we, I mean, I don't even know how fleshed out this is. Like, is there something coming out on Thursday when the Alliance presents their findings that is going to give greater detail as to the meat of the expenditures in this proposal?
No, it will not go into detail about the proposal, not at all.
Is there any more detail on the proposal?
There will be more detail once we, once we finalize the plan and have gotten all the reports in, including the internal, the internal scan report. We'll be able to further focus and get better quotes. But we've worked with individuals that do this kind of work to get a ballpark feel for what it would cost us. And as I indicated earlier, this is not all-inclusive. This is to get us started, to create that, that infrastructure, the foundation from which we can begin to build. And it's got to start somewhere. You can't have a plan and not invest in the plan by allowing us to continue to put effort and work into equity within city structure. So somehow or another, we've got to make it happen. And if you don't support it, then that can't happen. If you've got other suggestions or ideas, we welcome them. But based on how we know and what we've learned over the last however many months, we're following the same direction that many other city jurisdictions have. And we have gotten guidance and recommendations and best practices that we've looked into. And so we're not flying by the seat of our pants, but we're pulling information from information that's been provided us that will help us further our equity work for the city of Lansing. And so we welcome, if you have other thoughts or ideas. But again, we're, we didn't grab this. This is information that we were pulled together that we thought would help guide us through the next steps.
I get that. But this is also information that's been brought together by the Alliance, which doesn't welcome public input, which doesn't meet in a public way, which there are groups out in the community who do this work, who would probably have given just as much input and, and have been doing the work forever, that, that, and all this time was spent within the Alliance and, and, and doesn't necessarily mean that the work that the Alliance came up with aligns with the work that the public has come up with. And so that's my concern, is that there is all this other work being done, and there's no effort that I see right now to mesh those together to see if the outcomes are even aligned or that the processes, maybe there are other processes to consider. We, everything has been considered within the confines of City Hall and within the, the, I'm going to say, expertise of those folks who, I'm using air quotes, but who are invited to the Alliance. And, and I think that before we approve of, of an allocation of this size, that it's also worth it to vet outside of this process, the validity of those types of policies and procedures and plans.
If I, if I can, Council President, Councilwoman Dunbar, I, I would, I would relish the opportunity to sit down with you to sort some of what you just shared out. I, I think we've gotten it kind of inter, intertwined there. And, and I would honor the opportunity to sit down and help sort that out with you so that you actually know and understand how this operates, how we're functioning. But it's not what you described, please.
Okay. I, I welcome that opportunity, too. So maybe we could, like, text after this and set up an appointment time. I would be happy to.
So would I. I look forward to it.
Yeah, I'd like to be included in that, too, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
I think that's a discussion, though, that I think also, I mean, I don't know how we would do that, but that just sounds like the more information, the better. And so I'm trying to figure out, I don't want to glam on the Councilmember Dunbar's meeting, but I, I, more information so that we can understand this is, is best. So how do we do that so that as we're trying to make an informed decision, we all get the benefit of that exchange of information?
Thank you. Councilmember Wood, you had your hand up next.
Well, I think one of the ways to do that is to put these funds in a control account and then give us the opportunity to look at how we want those dollars spent and then, you know, and then move it out afterwards. I mean, we have a short time between now and the budget, whether all this can, budget passage, whether all this can be worked out between now and then. If we've all agreed that three hundred thousand dollars is something that is important in this budget to be utilized for this cause, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have everything ironed out at this point by, by approving the budget. Would this in a control account mean that it has to come back to council before the money's spent?
And that's why we put you on Ways and Means. Council, no, that's Jake Brower. And we're gonna, if you're, unless you're addressing something specific, we're gonna move, we're not gonna do the questions and answers because we're now at seven forty. So go ahead, Jake, and then we're gonna call it a night.
Yep, I appreciate that. I just wanted to add that we do have our Neighborhood Summit on May eighth. We'll also have, I believe, is still on the schedule, May third and May tenth for opportunities to discuss a lot more.
And that's, yes, thank you. I wanted to make sure that announcement was clear. We are meeting also as a city council committee, the whole, at ten AM for a budget input session. Jake will be there to present the budget, and then we will take comments from the community. When talking with Vice President Hussein, it didn't make a lot of sense to do a committee of the whole meeting Wednesday night. Because if Wednesday night was inconvenient, Monday night was probably equally as inconvenient. So we, we decided to try Saturday morning to see if folks had greater success. And I know that the ward reps have great success at bringing folks into their meetings on Saturday morning. So hopefully, we can articulate that into some public comment and public input to the budget on May tenth. I'll make that announcement at council, but I imagine anyone who's tuning in for the council meeting is probably here already for the committee, the whole meeting. So I'll stop talking. I'm going to say that when we adjourn, we are going to adjourn until seven fifty, giving you eleven minutes to take care of whatever business you need to take care of between now and the city council meeting. So we are adjourned.